Seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call to order our regular meeting. Do we have any requests to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion?
Nothing.
Okay.
Seven A.
Seven A. All right. Same. Okay, and Keith?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the order of items for the regular and consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, I have a little bit of a president's report. I really just wanted to share with you that I saw recently, you know, because I have a kid in school, I am a part of the PTA at my son's school, and so I get a bunch of PTA emails. And one of them recently came out that the National PTA proposed a resolution at their annual meeting, which reads, "Whereas all students benefit from access to diverse ideas and representation in books and media, which allow them to create connections to their knowledge and experiences, extend critical thinking beyond themselves, and provide opportunities to learn about the experiences of people who are different than they are. And whereas American voters and parents oppose the removal of books from school and public libraries, support librarians creating collections that include widespread offerings with varied viewpoints, and affirm the importance of giving young people access to books and not allowing individual parents to decide what books are available to other people's children. Therefore, be it resolved that the National PTA and its constituent associations are encouraged to advocate for laws, regulations, policies, and programs that protect against censorship and book bans, and protect free access to information and ideas in schools and public libraries." And I wanted to share that with the group because it feels really nice that the National PTA would support intellectual freedom and access. So.
I think it takes a lot to make a national proclamation like that from such a big group.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and it felt like a big deal, and I wanted to share that with this room. And I didn't have anything else, so I'll just turn it over to Tara.
All right. Well, thanks for that. That was really great. And yeah, like Joy said, it does take a lot to do that, so glad that happened. All right, well, you probably noticed in your board packet that there are some new pages this month, a database statistical report. You may have also gathered from the title that we plan to produce this quarterly. So I just wanted to go through that really quickly and review it with you. This is a response to the questions and interest that you all have had in our electronic resources that we subscribe to at the library, and spend a significant amount of not only money on, but also staff time. It takes a lot of training to make sure staff know how to use these databases because they need to be expert in them to teach patrons, but also to select them and place them on the website and all the things that we do with them. So Adult and Teen Services Department Head Laura Crayley created this report.
And it's on page thirty of ours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll notice that she pulled out a core sampling of databases. This certainly isn't all the databases or electronic resources. We have, that would be many, many, many pages. And you see from just this small sampling that the statistics provided for each are quite different, and it's kind of hard to compare an apples-to-apples comparison when it comes to these electronic resources. But the goal is to share the usage patterns of a small group of databases that represent the core of what we have to offer. And these are pretty standard databases that many libraries have. So let me just go through quickly, starting on page thirty. We're looking at Ancestry, Morningstar, Press Reader, Reference Solutions, and Value Line Research Center. And I think these statistics are telling of the kinds of people that use these and the kinds of research you get. So starting with Ancestry, just focusing on June, five hundred and fifty-seven unique searches. And if you've done genealogy research, you've got to do a lot of searches before you get even one thing. So I think it's interesting that there's many more searches than there were actual records viewed.
Also important to note with Ancestry, you must be in the library to use it, too.
Oh, that is a good point.
Which is different than most of the other databases that you can do remotely from wherever. So I think that's even more unique.
Yes. Morningstar and Value Line are similar databases in that they offer investment information and reviews of mutual funds and stocks. So that's a smaller group of people that are using those resources because it appeals to a small fraction of the population. But Value Line, you notice, is over five hundred people are using Value Line.
It's much more, better resource.
Okay, that's good to know. And I think it's easier to use personally a Value Line page rather than a Morningstar page. So those are two financial heavy hitters. Press Reader is one that you all are familiar with because we just started subscribing to that one a year or so ago, maybe. And the reason that we did was to get The Economist, and as we move down the page, you'll notice that The Economist is in the top three. But this one is interesting. It's got a very small set of people, seventy people using it, but man, they're reading a lot of articles.
Yeah.
And then with Reference Solutions, this is the database that you can use to build lists of companies. You could put in parameters, like I want to see all the companies in the state of Michigan that are Fortune 500 or whatever it is. So again, I think that bears out in these statistics where it's a small group of people who are using it, but the records returned, you know, eighteen people got seven thousand records. Because you might pull up a list of, I don't know, a couple thousand businesses in one Reference Solutions search. Moving on down the page, we move into some of our streaming and downloadable resources, namely Hoopla, Canopy, and Libby. Hoopla has just over nine hundred folks who use it on the regular, it looks like, with a total checkout of almost four thousand items. That's a lot. And I think you all remember that Hoopla has a throttle on it where we only allow people to check out a certain number of items per month. I think it's sixteen per user, something like that. Canopy is a similar structure where we're just paying per view, essentially. And that's a smaller group of people that use Canopy because it's kind of a narrower content offering. But they are watching twenty thousand minutes worth of stuff. Hello, come on in. Libby, as you know, is.
What is the narrower content offering?
Canopy has fewer formats, and it's more of an art house, like PBS-type offering in terms of content, whereas Hoopla is more, a lot wider.
Interest.
And then Libby, of course, is eBooks and audiobooks, and that gets a lot of use. These services databases are much more modest. They are just less popular than adult services databases are. But we're happy to offer them. I think the services librarians use them on occasion in a storytime, and they let people know that they're available all the time.
I wonder, though, like Tumble Books is young reader, really, really young kids, right? And I'm wondering if their caregivers are looking for something a little more tactile, like a book.
Possibly, yeah.
But that's nice that we offer it.
Moving on, you get some more detail about Hoopla. This is on page thirty-one. More detail about Hoopla by format, and you can see that audiobooks are this community's favorite, and also eBooks, but the other things get their fair share as well. Moving on to page thirty-two, this is some information about Canopy. I think it's really interesting to see these top three, or top five, most popular titles in each quarter. I don't know any of them except Father Brown.
Yeah, I felt bad.
I know. I don't know what gray zone is, but I'm going to look it up. And then looking at Libby, this is page thirty-three. You can see the tens of thousands of copies and titles that are used from Libby. And this is where, you know, Libby differs from Canopy and Hoopla in that we're actually purchasing the books, and we're cultivating the content there. Where Hoopla and Libby, I'm sorry, Hoopla and Canopy, we just get. I love seeing the top five books, too, at the end of the quarter.
Does this drive additional purchases? Like when we see, I know, obviously, if we do like a book club thing, then we'll purchase enough. But if we see a bestseller coming out, let's say, and we've purchased ten coupons or books to, and that's not enough, and there's a twenty-week wait or something, does that kick into, let's purchase some more?
Yes, just like with print.
Or at least making that decision.
Yes, just like with print, yeah. And then the last page, page thirty-four, this is where you see the top three circulated periodicals from Press Reader, and thank goodness, The Economist is there.
Guessing that.
Right. The New York Times, and USA Today, and. So reactions to this? Is this interesting, useful?
It is interesting. Yeah, it is interesting, interesting.
Great. Then look for it again in October.
Can I make a comment? Just assuming this will be part of our regular review?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Okay, personally, I'm, and there's a member of my board who says, "If you're going to add something to this board deck, you better take something away because I'm only going to read so much." But if you're looking for something to remove, the top five titles, I'm somewhat not interested in. And then the fines.
Fines and fees.
Which used to be, but we could see that annually, just up to.
I've been thinking about taking that out anyway. Would anybody be opposed if we removed that? What about some meeting room rental page?
That's the same. It's meaningless information.
Okay, we can take those out. Happy to.
In conjunction with the top titles for books, which I mentioned this before, Laura Crayley had done a really interesting talk to the ambassadors about how they select books, which I think would be interesting to the board at some point for the people who haven't taken the chance.
Okay, sure.
It might tie into some of.
That was an ambassador meeting.
It was an ambassador meeting.
A few meetings, a few ambassador meetings ago.
But I thought she had done that for us.
Did she have to?
Prior to the ambassador meeting.
Well, I don't, I don't remember that one either.
She was.
Yes.
There was another one that it wasn't selecting book titles. Oh, it was the databases.
Yeah, she came here to talk about that.
Last one.
I think she addressed the ambassadors about book selection, and then Lauren and Brooke addressed the ambassadors about program planning.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, moving on, I have a couple more updates, some building updates. The cedar fascia repairs that we talked about in the last Building and Grounds Committee meeting, Hugo and I are pulling, still pulling together information in response to the questions and comments and concerns that you all had. So I'm planning to present that at the August eighth Building and Grounds Committee meeting. We'll talk about that again at that time. And then the roof repair artisan needed four to six weeks to order material and gather their team together. So that work should start taking place end of this month, maybe beginning of August. And then our drainage improvements project is still under review by the township, so hopefully we'll have more to talk about on that in August. I wanted to let you know that United for Libraries, which is a subsection of the American Library Association directed towards trustees, foundations, and friends, is having their annual virtual conference. It's a three-day conference, July thirtieth through August first. July thirtieth, the day is devoted to topics related to trustees, and there are some really interesting topics, such as advocacy, preparing for troubling times, the trustee's role in the culture wars, effective succession strategies for library boards, which I think would be a good one for you all to watch or pay attention to. And then valuing your library beyond cost-benefit analysis. It's free. If you want to attend this, the Library of Michigan pays for our membership in the United for Libraries group. Danny and I are both planning to register and attend that July thirtieth date. And if any of you are interested, I can send this out after the meeting, and I can sign you up if you're interested.
Could it be done online? It is online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be interested in.
Why don't you send it to all of us?
I will.
And so do we have to watch it at a certain time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
And then if you pay attention to the library's social media, you may have seen a post today that the Canton Public Library created a blog post urging folks to go around the state of Michigan and have adventures at all Michigan libraries. And they requested submissions from libraries to tell folks what makes their library a destination. And we submitted a really lovely, yes, entry about our gardens. And the whole blog post is just really fun to read. It gives you an idea of the wide variety of things that are available in public libraries, so check that out. And the last thing is that our IT staff is going to conduct a survey of residents just to get a feel for what new topics they might be interested in for computer classes, and also the times of day that work best. So they're just trying to expand their repertoire and give folks what they want. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming out. And that's why.
Great. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Tara. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items? And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is now time for our call to the public. And this is a time where we can open up our meeting to anybody visiting, if anybody has any comments or anything to know. Okay, well, welcome. We are glad you're here. But we also have Laura Norman here to talk a little bit about the SOC.
Yeah, hi, guys. So SOC is going great. We're planning lots of fun things. I don't know if Tom talked about it last month, but right now we have staff readings, summer reading going right now. And Catherine had the lovely idea of whoever wins the raffle gets a gift card for pizza, just like reminiscent from childhood.
Yeah.
Get that personal pan pizza.
Really? Big hit.
Thought that was great. So that's happening. We're also, you know, we're looking ahead. We've started thinking about maybe hosting a meal for the staff to celebrate, what is it, Library Week?
National Library Week.
National Library Week. So we're starting to think about that. Yeah, it's been great. We're just sort of chugging along.
Did you guys have your Spirit Week yet?
That's, I believe it's like next.
Oh, good. I want to see everybody dressed up as whatever you're doing.
We're all very excited.
What are some of the?
Is there a theme?
Yes, there are five separate themes. Let's test my memory here. So there's Twin Day, there's Nineties Day, Nineties Day. There's Monochrome Day, like dressing all in monochrome. I know some departments are doing like a special color that they're all going to dress.
The whole department.
Yeah, and I'm.
Circus purple.
Sports team.
Sports.
That's probably why.
Sports teams, Nineties Day, twinning, and.
Oh, oh, the summer reading shirts.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, fun.
So those are the five themes.
And we need to know the days so we can.
Yeah.
Come in and.
I'll send it out, too.
Yeah, great. That's great.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Okay, well, we don't have any unfinished business this evening, but we will move on to new business, and we will talk about our twenty-three, twenty-four audit.
Yeah, the moment we've all been waiting for. Well, I want to thank Alan Panther and his team at Yo and Yo for conducting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four audit of the library's financial reports. Of course, staff, especially Monica Gower, who really put in the blood, sweat, and tears, I mean, all year long. She keeps us all on track and does a great job making sure we're following the rules and doing what we need to do to code everything properly. And she worked very closely with Alan's team to get them all the information that they need. I want to thank you all. This is one of your most important jobs, reviewing our finances. So thank you for your review of the audit. I'll get the right thing up there, Alan.
Okay, no problem.
I'll just remind everybody that Alan has been doing our audit for some time, and so he knows our library, but he is also a board trustee of the library himself.
Yeah.
So he knows the work.
From two different sides.
Yep.
Yes.
Remind us which library.
Clarkston Independence District Library. Yeah, I'm on the board. We had our meeting last night. Yeah, we had our audit presented, too.
Oh.
All right, so you all have in front of you the paper version of the whole entire audit. It was in the board packet. This is the governance letter that Alan will talk about. And there's also the PowerPoint in paper as well, and I'll be posting it up there. And I am now going to turn this over to Alan to present our twenty-two, twenty-four audit.
All right, well, thank you so much. As Tara said, my name is Alan Panther. I'm a partner at Yo and Yo, here to present the audit. The materials that you have, I guess Tara already said that. You have the audit, the governance letter, and the presentation, which I guess is behind me.
Yep.
That's great.
You have to trust me.
Okay, no, I do. That's fine. So, and I do plan to follow the presentation that's behind me here. So the audit went very well, as usual. The library was very well-prepared when we arrived, and we were able to complete our procedures efficiently. We'd like to thank everyone that we work with, especially, as Tara said, Monica does all the heavy lifting in terms of closing the books, getting everything ready for us, dealing with us during our fieldwork, after our fieldwork, all the questions that we have. She really does a great job of handling all of that. So we'd really like to thank her and Tara, of course, for everything that they did during the audit. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you. So our audit includes an examination of the financial reporting process of internal controls and also certain aspects of legal compliance. And based on that study of financial reporting, internal controls, and legal compliance, we have a responsibility to report in writing when we find certain things wrong. I'm pleased to report that, based on that study of those items that I referenced, we have no written audit findings this year. We have no management letter comments. So that is a very positive reflection on the board, on the library, on management, and it's really something that you should be proud of. So a clean audit, once again. So my plan for this evening is to give you some key takeaways from the audit, also to answer any questions that you have. We had a lengthy discussion at the finance committee meeting last week, so I don't plan on going in a level of detail that's anywhere near what we talked about the other day. The presentation should keep this fairly short and succinct, but of course, if you have any questions, just go ahead and fire away, and we'll talk about those. Okay, so the first page is, references the independent auditor's report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud and not to give assurance on internal control. So it's a very important concept about what it is that we're here to do. We're here to give you an opinion on your financial statements, which is what you see referenced here. So this is our opinion on your financial statements, and we're giving what's called an unmodified or clean opinion. That is the best opinion you can get, and it means a couple of things. It means, first of all, the statements are formatted in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in other words, everything that's supposed to be there is there. And also, based on the procedures that we perform, the numbers are good. So unmodified opinion is definitely what you want to see. All right, so the first slide, the next slide, actually. We'll get into, I've got a balance sheet and a statement to show you, and I'm not going to talk a whole lot about these, just a couple of key items. So the balance sheet here, and we are just showing the general fund. The gift fund is excluded from this discussion. This is a snapshot, a picture as of a point in time, as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And the biggest thing that I want to talk about here is fund balance. So towards the bottom of the page, you can see that the fund balance, the total fund balance is sixteen million, six hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars. And you can see it's broken down into a few different components. You can see that there's a non-spendable portion that pertains to the fact that you've already expended the funds for a prepaid, but that's an asset that relates to this fiscal year that you're in now. And that's pretty minor, ninety-six hundred dollars. And then you start getting into committed for cash flow. So that's based on your tax calendar. So you guys levy your property tax in the winter. That's December first. You collect it through the winter, and then you settle with the county in the spring. And so at the point in time, at this March thirty-first point, you guys are about as cash-heavy as you get for the year because you need that money to operate for the entire year. So that is eight months of operating expenses. So that's what you've levied and collected, and that's available for operations for basically the rest of the, until you levy it to another tax. And then there's the amount that's assigned. It's assigned for three different purposes. First of all, you have a post-employment benefits program that the library offers to certain employees. So that liability is reserved in the fund balance here. There's also an assignment of fund balance for compensated absences. So in other words, the amounts that library employees earn through their continued employment at the library that is set aside here as well. And also, there is a significant amount of this six-point-six million. About three-point-seven million of that is assigned for capital improvements. So that's, I know that you have a laundry list of things that you'd like to spend on now and into the future, and that's the amounts that are set aside to address those wishes on your list. So we mentioned the adequacy of fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. So how much do we have? How does that compare to historical norms? How does that compare to, you know, recommended minimums? You know, what are we looking at? So the library, so the total fund balance is sixteen-point-six million dollars, as I said, is about two-hundred-and-thirty-six percent of annual expenditures. Last year's about one-hundred-and-ninety-eight percent. So the fund balance went up this year due to higher revenues and lower expenditures, but I'll get into that on the next page. So the library has a healthy fund balance that allows some flexibility and cushion against bad economic times, money for capital improvements, funding of employee benefit costs, and the like. Okay, so the next page is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this shows how fund balance changed during the year. And that is the third number for the bottom, the net change in fund balance. It increased this year by two-point-six million dollars. How did we get there? Total revenues, you see the first total there, nine million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and eight. That is up almost a million this year, about eleven percent. Most of that is property taxes, or a lot of that is property taxes because your taxable values in the township continue to grow. Your millage is unchanged. And the rest of the increase has to do with investment income. So you can see that there was about five-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars in investment income. Last year, that was about one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, so a much better year in terms of investment experience this year. On the expenditure side, seven million, thirty-two thousand, and four hundred and six. That is very, very close to the prior year. That is down about forty-six thousand dollars, less than one percent. So very narrow range that the expenditures are in there. So your increase in fund balance is really being driven by your increase in revenue. All right, next page. I got a couple of graphs, and then we'll wrap it up. So the first one is a five-year comparison of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. And again, we're just talking about the general fund. So you can see that the revenues, the blue bar, are trending up, except for twenty-twenty-two was a little bit of a down year because of some investment losses. And then twenty-three and twenty-four, so if you look at the revenues, they're trending up. The expenditures tend to bounce around a little bit, so with major capital projects. So you can see that in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two, the library had major capital projects. So you can see that. And then, as a result, the fund balance went down in those two years. And then, so you can see that the years where there weren't major capital expenditures, the fund balance went up. So three out of the five years. Okay, the next slide breaks down the expenditures. And this is a five-year graph. So each section of the graph, we broke it down into the four largest sections, and then aggregated everything else and other. And so this shows you trends in a functional manner. So you can see that personnel costs, of course, what you pay your employees, both salaries and benefits, that's the largest cost that the library incurs. And you can see that those have been steadily increasing over the last five years. You can see that library materials and facilities are pretty stable from year to year. And there's also the capital outlay, which that, you can very clearly see the major expenditures in 2020 and 2022 there. All right, the next one, sorry, the next slide deals with the governance letter. So I just want to really quickly touch on this. This is the, the stapled letter that is included with your materials. So that is a required communication, so we issue a letter similar to that with every audit that we do. Most of it is a form letter, but it doesn't have to be. If we have results from, that are kind of deviating from the norm, we would communicate any sort of those things in here. And that could cover a wide range of things. But in, in your guys' case, the, the, what's being communicated in the letter is very, it's very close to what the boilerplate says. So there's, there's very little deviation from, from what the auditing standards that kind of give rise to these things. So the letter discusses, discusses a, a, a lot of things, but any estimates used in preparing the financial statements, any new accounting standards, has some informational items. It discusses any difficulties or disagreements with management, which of course, we had none of those. Any misstatements we noted, and any management letter comments would be here as well, as I said, there were any of those. So, if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Finn?
Yeah?
Just the one question about the past item. Where did we resolve on that for next year?
We decided to leave it and, and record it next year. And I think that's something that, you know, going forward, the library will, because I think, I think, you know, we're transitioning into more of a digital world as, as, you know, you referenced just a minute ago and all the subscription stuff, you know, that you're seeing. So I think a lot of that is going to increase over time. It wasn't a big number this year, but I think it's going to become a bigger number going forward. So we're talking about, for what Shane's talking about is, we had a discussion about, there was a new Gatsby statement this year called Gatsby 96, and it deals with subscription, software subscription liabilities. And we went through a process with, Monica did a lot of work on it, actually, and Tara. And, and it was, we went through and we, we calculated what the liability, what the asset liability was, and, and, but it was so small that it, it was, it was not necessary to record it. So, but then we talked about it at the finance committee meeting, and I, I think that the, the general wish of the finance committee was, even though it was a minor dollar amount, to go ahead and just record it. But the finance committee meeting was on Thursday, and making that magnitude of a change was going to be problematic for getting you guys what you needed for this meeting. So, so we decided to go ahead and just leave it the way it was and record it next year. So, that was enough.
And then on our page 36, we have those minutes. There's just one change I'd like to make for that. It says, you know, we talked about gas, this item, and not to record any transactions. I think that's better to say we decided not to record one transaction.
One. Oh, and your minutes?
Yeah.
And you have the minutes for the finance committee.
Okay.
We can change that.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Alan?
No, but thank you so much for the work that you did here.
Thank you.
For us.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, and taking the time to explain things to any of us that don't speak this language fluently.
Welcome.
Read it a few times, and then you will.
Yeah.
You'll fall asleep.
All right, thank you so much, Alan.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, have a good rest of your meeting.
You're welcome to stay.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, have a good night, Alan.
All right.
All right.
Okay, well, on page 37, we do have an action.
True.
If anybody has that pulled up.
Do.
Would you like to read that for us?
I move to accept the fiscal year 2023, 2024 audit report as presented and placed on file.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you. Well, that's done for this year.
Yes. And please pass along to Monica everybody's gratitude, but also, you know, that she was called out here a few times for saying.
I will.
And to you all on the finance committee, thank you. That's.
Team effort, all around.
Totally, yeah. Many hands.
Okay, well, we are going to move on to the annual report presentation that Catherine will give, but first Tara's going to queue it up for us.
Yes, thank you. So you just heard how much money was spent in 2023. What did we do with it? Catherine's about to tell you.
Can I now?
But I do want to just mention, in the board packet, there were a couple of, what page is this? This is 91. There were a couple of reports. One you have already seen. Well, actually, before I, before I get into that, I have to thank Catherine for her work on the annual report. As you know, I was the assistant director once, so I know how much work goes into preparing the annual report. It is a lot of work to do, so I appreciate her effort on this. Also, all the department heads write several hundred words to contribute to this, so they really did a lot of work. There's a couple of administration clerks that do a lot of heavy lifting to help Catherine format this. And one of our clerks compiles all those comments that you read, and everyone, I mean, she compiles that into several pages. And then this is also something that Catherine produces, is this big binder, which has the report you're about to hear about, plus all of our newsletters for the year, all the e-newsletters, flyers to represent some of the programs that we did through the year, and a handful of other things. So, and these all live in our, they eventually go into our archives room as a scrapbook of the year in the library. So thank you, Catherine, and everyone else for, for your work on that. But in the packet on page 103 is a memo regarding the endowment funds. And we actually put this in the board packet for May. I guess we jumped in on it. Spoiler alert, we have endowment funds. The purpose of this is just to let you all know the status of each of those endowment funds. So how much money is there, their value, any contributions that had been made, and then any grants that are paid out. As you know, we go through a whole exercise each spring where we decide if we're going to take a payout from each of these. So that's there for your information. And then on page.
That's very helpful.
Oh, good. Okay.
For the beach fund. Good.
Appreciate that. Yeah, it explains what it's for and who decides. Then on page 106 is an annual investment report, and this is a requirement of PA 20, which is our, is the law that talks about how public entities can invest their funds. So this is just meant to give you a big, a bird's eye view, snapshot of how market forces and the bank environments affect the library's finances. So those two things, and this is kind of the reason for the annual report, and then all the other stuff is built around it. But again, I think it's great to tie all this money that we spent to the activities that we did, the programs, and all the smiling faces that we created because of all of the work that we did. So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine now, who is going to share her report.
Yes, thank you, Tara. Thank you for covering the money stuff for me. That was great. So I am really happy to be able to talk about this overview of all of our achievements and milestones that we accomplished from April 1, 2023 until March of this year. The greatest challenge we faced during that time was our library millage renewal on the February 27th, 2024 ballot. As you are well aware, township residents had the opportunity to renew an existing library millage at the current rate for another 10 years. With support from our wonderful staff, volunteers, friends, and you all, the millage renewal passed with over 72% of the vote, which was a powerful endorsement of the value that our library brings to the community. Throughout the year, we had committees dedicated to advancing the goals of the strategic plan who met regularly to refine their objectives and make recommendations to administration. An interior designer began the process of reimagining underutilized library spaces. Every department worked to enhance our facilities, collections, and services. Programming and community outreach reached new heights, attracting residents to the library for a variety of events. And overall, it was a year of significant progress, positioning us well for the year that we're currently in and the years ahead. We have some amazing programs and events. Kind of our cornerstone events are the summer and winter reading programs, which were highly successful in engaging readers of all ages, with nearly 900 participants in both programs combined. And we are well on our way to beating that this year. I'm just going to say that, sneak preview for next July. In total, children logged an impressive 8,824 days of reading, while teens and adults logged over 1,400 books read as part of those two programs. Throughout the summer reading program, the prize patrol visited two households each week that displayed "Love My Library" lawn signs, delivering prize bags filled with library and book-themed items. You can see one happy family that received a prize in the middle photo there. Special events for children throughout the year included a reading with the dogs, where children can practice their reading skills in front of a nonjudgmental audience, and a Bluey party. Those are the other two photos up there, as well as an interactive showing of Wizard of Oz, trick or treat at the library, a T-Rex tea party, take-home New Year's Eve fun kits, and more. During March is Reading Month, youth services welcomed nearly 400 local kindergarten students to tour the youth room and learn about the joy of reading. For adults and teens, locally focused programs like Ballet Folklorico, Cranbrook programs, and lectures on Detroit architecture proved very popular, as well as programs by the MSU Extension, and monthly craft kits. Music program continued to feature prominently throughout the year, including the 13th season of the Chamber Music Concerts, presented by students from the University of Michigan School of Music Theater and Dance, as well as five programs hosted by our newer partners, the Great Lakes Chamber Music Festival, including a family presentation of Little Red Riding Hood, which included the debut of an original score, narration, and interactive activities for kiddos during that event. We also hosted our first-ever library card design contest during this fiscal year. Township residents submitted 124 designs for a library card. After careful consideration, a staff committee selected 10 finalists in each age category, youth, teen, and adult. The community then had the opportunity to vote for their favorite designs, resulting in one winner per category seen here. Those winning designs were printed onto new library cards, also prominently displayed in the library, on social media, and in our print newsletter. And now this year, they are available as "Love My Library" signs for this year's summer reading challenge. Another annual contest that we had was the 7th Annual Photo Contest that closed in April 2023. So I'm feeling I'm talking about something from half a lifetime ago. But that year's theme was celebrating the past, embracing the future. And township residents were invited to honor and acknowledge where they've been while also welcoming the inevitable changes to come. We had 39 participants who submitted 69 photos. Here you can see the Best in Show winner. This was the People's Choice Award winner, which won 600 votes out of 2,295 total votes cast in the competition. And here you see first, second, and third place winners in each of the three age groups. Some really outstanding work from township residents. Behind the scenes, library staff diligently worked on many cross-departmental projects to enhance the patron experience. BTPL Mobile was released in late summer 2023. This app allows users to check their accounts, placeholds, search for materials, check out items, and more. And then early in 2024, the library upgraded to a new online catalog system, Vega Discover, to provide patrons with an enhanced and user-friendly experience. There were also some key building improvements made this year. The door access system throughout the building was upgraded, and the study room doors were placed on a reservation system with which patrons can reserve rooms online and access them using a numeric code. The irrigation and alarm, security alarm systems were updated to web-based platforms, allowing remote control through apps, which now we can get security alarm alerts at 3:00 AM, right Tara? When we flood. Facility services also transitioned to battery-operated power tools, reducing maintenance costs previously associated with their gas-powered equipment. You may have seen the early childhood area in youth services was revamped with new armchairs for parents and caregivers, a play kitchen to encourage open-ended play, and a train table. Four new accessible parking spaces were added in the employee parking area. We also contracted throughout that year with new vendors for cleaning, trash and recycling services, and vending machines. Roof repairs began to address leaks from a faulty membrane, and we entered the planning phase of installing a detention basin to mitigate the lower-level flooding issues. The Friends of the Library continued setting new sales records at their second Saturday sales this year. Their sales expanded from just two rooms in the lower level to all four rooms, each showcasing a special collection like vintage books or children's materials. The Friends approved over $105,000 in funding for the library during that fiscal year, the most in their 59-year history. Those gifts were used to fund our Chamber Music Concert series, a postcard campaign to non-library users, prize patrol promotional items, a winter party, book club books, a cell signal boosting system, and much more. Other gifts included the donation of a collection of research on homes in Bloomfield Township and Bloomfield Hills from dedicated Bloomfield Historical Society member John Marshall. We also received a collection of Hillcrest beer books from 1945 to 1992 from patron and longtime Bloomfield Hills High School employee Jim Wolfe. But wait, there's more. Opportunities to connect with our community partners remained constant throughout the year. Youth services staff introduced a school liaison program, assigning a librarian to each Bloomfield Hills school, including IA, to check in regularly and provide library updates and a consistent connection to teachers and school media specialists. This year also saw the launch of the Distracted Librarians Podcast, a collaborative effort of librarians from adult and teen and youth services. The podcast features chats about movies, video games, music, books, and more, and is recorded at BCTV's podcast studio. Library staff also participated in various outreach events, including hosting tables at several Bloomfield Hills schools events and visiting numerous classrooms throughout the year. Staff also engaged with the community at the senior center, Bowers School Farm, Johnson Nature Center, various preschools, and at the Bloomfield Township Open House. And finally, the library also began serving as an early voting site for Bloomfield Township Birmingham and Southfield Township elections, another way that we can collaborate with our community. Our annual staff development, development day for that year was held in person and involved a hands-on workshop for all staff to learn about the strategic plan and begin the implementation phase together. That is the day that resulted in the formation of those three committees I mentioned earlier, which then went on to meet regularly throughout the year to achieve their goals. Library staff also had the opportunity to attend a new training, Stop the Bleed, in which we learned how to respond in case of traumatic injury. We also had some internal changes made to staff positions and department names to better reflect the current state of library work in our ongoing effort to evolve with the times. Three intern positions were turned into one early childhood specialist and two library assistant positions. We renamed the role of senior in charge to be person in charge. And three departments updated their names. Adult Services became Adult and Teen Services. Technical Services, which nobody really knew what they did, became Material Services. And Systems became IT. And last, but certainly not least, we have you, our library board of trustees, who guide the library through budget policy and working with our wonderful library director, Tara. And for the benefit of anybody watching, trustees are elected every four years, and this position will be on the November 2024 ballot. That was our year in review. Any questions?
Right here.
It really was.
I think that's applause, applause.
You did there?
Yes.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you Catherine.
Yes, a wonderful annual report.
Yeah, when you pull it all together. I remember doing all those things, but at the same time.
It feels like a lot of emails in the moment. If there's only one job, email.
It's just email.
But then when you look at everything that was accomplished. It's, you know, it's a great team of people.
More than, more than just email.
More than just emails.
Emails and meetings, yeah.
It is the work.
Really great. Thank you so much Catherine.
When are we going to hear more from that lady who came in to talk about reimagining space?
We're gonna talk about that in August.
Okay.
There have been some changes in that front, so I want to talk about that at the August Berlin and Brown community meeting.
Okay, good.
Well, we do have an action. That is on page ninety-two. If anybody has that motion up, would they like to read that?
I got it.
Great.
I move to accept the library annual report and annual investment report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A big thank you to you Catherine for presenting this and getting this all together, but also to the entire staff for all of the work. Putting it together and making it all happen. I know I say it all the time, but the staff is really what makes the magic happen here at this library and they should be celebrated. All the time, constantly.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we also have.
One more item.
Yeah, one more item to discuss under new business and that is a printer award. That is on page one oh nine in our packet.
Yes. Okay, thank you Danny and thank you for your review of the annual report. Okay, so our last item tonight is staff printer replacement and maintenance bids or RFP. And Catherine is going to take over for this, this one as well. I'll let her talk to you about the nitty gritty details and answer any questions. The proposals that we received are here in case anybody wants to pour over them. After you've read through the entire audit and looked through the binder as well.
Do you do it?
She's already done it. You can test me.
So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine who is in charge of RFPs. In addition to annual reports.
Thank you. So to give a little background. There are staff printers in a few key locations throughout the building and only four of them are currently under a service agreement. The others are IT staff manage, manage repairs, maintenance and any like toner replacement. And so part of the goal of this, I believe all the printers are a minimum of five to seven years old. Does that sound right at least?
Maybe more.
Maybe more. At least the one at the welcome desk was donated by a patron at some point a long time ago. So yeah, it's, it's been a little bit piecemeal over the years. And so part of the idea was to replace the printers, but also to put them all under one service agreement together for easier management by our IT team. We put out the RFP on May thirteenth. And we did an optional walkthrough for interested bidders on May thirtieth. And by the deadline of June tenth, we had received five proposals. From Applied Innovation, which is the company that we have our current service agreements with. As well as Canon, Konica Minolta, Toshiba and Xerox. Tara, Paul and I reviewed these proposals individually and then got together to discuss them. All of the proposals meant, met our basic requirements and included similar response times. We did follow up with a few additional questions about toner recycling programs and network security protocols. Which each vendor replied in a timely manner with satisfactory responses. We had requested pricing for both leasing, four and five-year leases, as well as for the purchase of the equipment. Purchasing the equipment does provide better value for the library, offering us a more cost-effective solution. While still including that ongoing service and maintenance that we were looking for.
Can you, how did you sort of that conclusion?
Well, just looking at the overall price over the course of five years.
So I didn't do the math, but if you multiply the lease rate, it'll work.
It was significantly higher than the outright purchase rate. Pricing for the purchase ranged from about twenty-six thousand to thirty-four thousand dollars between the five companies. We really prioritized public library experience, clarity and completeness of the proposal and service times. Three of the companies had significant public library experience spelled out in their proposals and via their references. And of those three, two submitted thorough, comprehensive proposals that were readily understandable. Applied Innovation has been the library's printer vendor since twenty seventeen. They are also, not included in this proposal is our real workhorse of a printer in the admin office from which we print all of our flyers. Board packets, all of this information that you all get. Applied is our current vendor for that printer as well. Their toner deliveries are prompt, machines are typically serviced the same day as we put in a service call. They have shown a strong commitment to the library, responding very quickly to requests for information and any questions that we had. Their purchase price of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars is in the mid-range. And their ongoing service costs are also on par with all the other proposals. We would be very happy to continue working with Applied Innovation, bringing all of our staff printers under their purview. So that is our recommendation to award that bid to Applied. Does anybody have any questions?
Are you, are all the printers going to be the same or some are different?
No, that's a great question. I believe Applied had three or four printer models that they would use for the sixteen printers. They did a pretty careful review of the volume each printer sees. So for instance, you know, the printer in Lyndon's office might have a lower volume than the printer in the staff hallway. Or the circulation printer, which see a lot more volume going through. So they made recommendations based on that. I think also a larger format printer for facility services who might be printing plans, need a larger capability.
Are some where you can use a library card to, and now we're getting them remotely, or some different in terms of how they receive? Or get payment for?
That's a good question. These are all staff printers, so nothing for public.
Oh, so what about?
So these are service desks, offices and workrooms.
And the public ones are?
How are the, I'm not sure how the public ones are managed right now. The public ones are from Applied Imaging as well and we're, they're working fine. We haven't, we don't have a need to go out to bid for those right now. And we did just get that library document station, which we're gonna see how that plays out and maybe in a couple of years we'll be looking at those too. But yeah, this was just strictly staff.
Confuse.
And those couple of goals that Catherine mentioned.
When you say library document, is that the print?
It's a scanner.
Print.
Well.
You can't say.
Hurts your mouth to say it.
Printch is different. Printch is what allows you to print from off-site.
Right.
But the library document station is used here in-house and it scans, faxes, you can scan to email. It does a little bit more than just printing.
Okay, and that's public?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is a motion.
I have it up.
You do, great.
I move to award the bid for staff printer replacement and maintenance for the Bloomfield Township Public Library to Applied Innovation five 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 five. Glenwood Hills Parkway Southeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five one two.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work on.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your very comprehensive.
Just one final question. What will happen to all the old printers?
Great question. My understanding is that you're being removed by supply.
Okay, will they donate them to somebody?
Are they being recycled or something?
I don't know what their discard policy is.
Okay, so we're not gonna be donating to someone. They'll take them and do something with them. Presumably environmentally sensitive and what have you, so.
Great, thank you.
Can I tell a quick printer story?
Yeah.
They're always the best. We bought the Brown four today. It's the largest Ford dealership in the world. They have sixty-seven printers and swear to God, some of them are like, some, something that somebody brought home. They don't sync, they're not matching. So one of our guys was like, all right, there's a pool using, each, each one has their own printer. Hey, great news, we're gonna get rid of all of these printers and get one high volume, you know, efficiency. And it was rebellion. Nobody wanted to give a bit. I can't have my own printer. It's like, no, no, but you get this printer.
Right.
What I want, but I can't.
Yeah.
I don't wanna walk. You never know what's gonna set people up.
Be careful.
Luckily, these are all one for one replacements, not a whole new structure.
Anarchy.
We are gonna move on to a discussion of items removed from the consent agenda. And Shane, you have something to discuss on seven A.
I just got it again.
Page twelve.
Twelve, okay, that's helpful.
It was just, I had just one question on page eighteen, which is the budget. If you look, there's two items here on, on services. We went over our databases. You'll see we budgeted, if you look at the second column. You've got under electric service databases, two twenty for the year. We spent one oh seven, but we're only a quarter of the way through. Is that, is that just timing? Could these things pay?
Yeah.
And then below, we put in the budget sixty grand for building insurance, but we spent sixty-five. Again, is that like what?
It's just timing, yeah.
Is that, what is that? Like just general liability costs?
Yeah, we, we pay, you know, I'm not super one hundred percent clear on that, but we pay the township because we're on their, we're on their policy. So we pay them at some point in the year on one of those invoices that we get from them.
Well, where, were you asking about insurance?
Under facilities?
Yeah, it's under facilities and equipment. Yeah, let's see the one thirteen. So that's, so we obviously, when we did our budget, we didn't, we underestimated our insurance.
We did, yeah.
But as long as there's no additional payments, it won't be crazy.
I don't think so. I think, I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure it's a one payment per year.
That was it. I appreciated the expansive explanation of every single dollar spent.
That was it for us?
It's okay.
Okay.
Okay. The, okay, this maintain X, I'm assuming that's for Hugo?
Yeah.
Okay, so how does that, okay, so that web-based software for tracking facilities, spending, staff resources, inventory. How does that interact with our, our library system or?
So it's a.
Is that like standalone or what?
It's, it's standalone. It's a web-based portal and Hugo and his team have to input data into it. So for instance, you know, we spent a lot of money with roles. He can put in all the invoices to roles.
Okay.
Then it uses AI, of course, to track all that and it can compile reports to say, hey, this year you've spent this much on roles or, you know. You've spent this much time or you've spent this much on air filters. It does some analysis of all that data entry that he puts in. It also is a, a help request function as well, which we already have, but this will again allow. Him to track how many times help requests go through, how long it takes for them to be responded to.
So it's more project management of maintenance projects and requests.
Yes, and then payments.
Payments.
And then also inventory too.
So like all the paper towel and toilet paper and all of that. He can track that there. So then, would he give him a total for roles that he sends to Monica or?
No, payments will still be processed. He'll still just give invoices to Monica and she tracks them in the accounting software. But it's more for him to analyze projects. Like I'll use the example that Keith brought a few months ago, like this toilet's leaky, we fixed it five times. Should we get a new one or just keep repairing it? So it's that kind of decisions.
Okay. And one other thing, there was an expense for about so long legal services, but I'm not sure that you could discuss that here or is that? Something confidential or?
Well, I can tell you that the library received an EEOC complaint and so that was our, our personal lawyer responding to that.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Great, good questions. Oh, were there any other discussions of items removed from the consent agenda? No, okay. Uh, okay, can I have a motion then to approve the items removed from the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Well, now it is time for other. Does anybody have any other, other?
I have minimal other because I wasn't at the meeting. I think only Joan was there for me, but I did want to.
For the Friends.
For the Friends, yes, I'm sorry, for the Friends meeting. I, I did want to commend the Friends for some of, some of the really interesting things they're doing lately. I don't know how many of you are in their communication, social media, but they were, they've been doing auctions for the last couple of months about. When they receive something that's particularly of interest that's been donated. They're calling them out and making them available for people to see. It's kind of like whetting their appetite, but it's also a silent auction. So anyway, kudos to them for doing that and they also had a, an excellent sale on Saturday.
So I think six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes, so they're, that's ten percent above June. That's really good, I think, for, especially in a month where people are oftentimes out of town, but you know, all the volunteers that go into. Making every sale happen is, is pretty amazing, the organization of such and every person's assigned to a room and it's, it's pretty incredible.
Yeah, that, those sales are a pretty well-oiled machine, you know, they.
Incredibly well-oiled, yeah.
Yes, so I know you have a meeting tomorrow.
Yep, I do.
Right? So you'll be sure to let them know that we all, yeah, sing, sing their praises when they. Make such great sales and all of their, appreciate all their hard work and their efforts.
Yeah.
On behalf of the library.
I will let them know.
I can't go to that meeting. It seems to be at the same time as the standing monthly meeting I have.
Third Wednesday, yeah.
If I was there, I might ask them what, you know, if they're, what are the, our employees' contributions to that sale? Like are we, do they all stick around and clean up? Or do we do that?
They clean up their stuff and then we have to reset the rooms.
Move the furniture.
The table and chairs have to be reset.
And then the books that don't sell go where?
They, they take them, they package them and they box them up and they donate them to a variety of places across the state.
Is it one and done? So if you don't sell in that sale, it's, it's gone and then they reload it? They just, they have some process to?
They have a process. They mark the books and they know how long they sit on the shelf, so if they don't sell after, I don't know what their, their threshold is, but they will get rid of them after some time.
So those rooms are permanently dedicated, some of them?
No, they, they get all set up starting on Thursday before sale. Facility sets up all the tables for them and then the Friends come in and they do the setting up of the merchandise. Thursday and Friday, and then they have the sale on Saturday and then on Sunday they take all that merchandise and put it away, put it in boxes. Some of it does get tossed. And then Facility has to reset the rooms, take out, track.
Are we then never able to rent out those rooms on those days? Wow.
And what about the room where you have just those shelves? It's all shelves. They empty that too?
No, that stays set up all the time. That is permanently dedicated to them.
And what are we charging them for?
Zero.
And you know how I feel about this? I can't wait to go to one of those meetings.
I think it's, the case is closed from meeting the tier and I want to.
Say it again.
I think the issue is closed from meeting the tier.
Never mind. I'm happy to reopen it. It's fine. I'm a member of the Friends. I can do whatever I want at those meetings.
Yeah. Thank you for that report. Just, was there anything else I don't wanna? Is there any other, other? No? Okay. Well, I will mention that our next. Well, I will mention that our next scheduled board meeting is going to be Tuesday, August twentieth. And that, our meeting will start at seven as usual, but we will be awarding the Meyer Scholarship at six-thirty that evening, which is always a wonderful.
Yes.
Meeting.
And.
I will not be.
I know, it's.
Joy will dearly will assist.
Yeah, I'm going to be Joy.
And.
The fun part.
Scholarships.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
At that meeting, we will also have our twenty-five, twenty-six budget here.
We're thinking about the next.
Oh, yeah, always thinking ahead.
So we hope everyone can come.
Yes, come at six-thirty, come at six-twenty, so you're definitely here for it.
There will be refreshments.
Yes. And it's just a great, it's so great to get to award these scholarships. And if there's nothing else, then we can go ahead and ensure.
Just one quick thing. I'm so sorry. I apologize. So I just, it was just an informational thing. I have a note here in my calendar that we have a budget review session.
Yes.
Nine to ten on the first of August.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Yes, and then also the Building and Grounds Committee meeting, August eighth.
That I do not seem to have.
At nine AM.
Okay.
Be sure.
And Keith, if you want Zoom links for those.
I will send a note requesting it.
Great, perfect.
I apologize for not having sent a note the last time.
I may have to as well on the first.
At nine.
Nine.
I do not, I would like Zoom.
Okay.
For which?
Well, the August one I have on the calendar. What's the other one?
August eight, at nine AM. That's Building and Grounds.
I got that. To the extent it can be done.
Sure.
Zoom, that's better.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Let's adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. We got a lot done today.